Should be.
Mikes alive, so watch him out.
It's forty feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're sure of these?
I've got. That sounds great.
We can talk about that.
Yep. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting for the Buxton Planning Board for June fourteenth order. First item on the agenda is pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of a site walk for.
Natasha.
Natasha Humani of twenty-eight, two eighty-eight Peace Road. Somebody on the board want to give a brief overview of the site walk we had? Was it a week? Last Monday?
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
Go ahead, Scott.
So we did a site walk of this application last Monday. It seemed like it was longer than last Monday. We walked the property out back, looked at our map to see what the best liability, how it was going to fit on the site. We discussed, well, there's actually quite a bit of fill going in. There was three or four feet of fill going in that's not showing on the map. Yeah, I think that's probably about all I had. Other than that, I really didn't have, had some comments after the site walk, after I got home thinking about it more. We saw the location on the well of the neighbors. Did appear that the parking, as it's currently designed, will be facing the neighbor's house, which we'll talk about later.
What's that? Roger, you were there. Everyone was there. Any comments? Site walk?
Uh, no, I mean, it's, um, it looks like there was, the room worked, but it did, it did look like, yeah, it was just gonna need some sort of, they talked about some natural vegetation to block the headlights from shining into the neighbor's yard, I think is one thing they had mentioned and, yeah.
Greg.
Building location was a little difficult to find at first, so was the septic that Mark Hampton had laid out, but we did manage to find it. Other than that, I'm pretty happy with it.
Okay. Given what the other board members said, we started on Peace Well, we walked in, we had one of our assistants measure the distance to the well and the neighbors. And other than that, all the adjoining wells are really far away, so I don't know if that's an issue. That's about all I had on the site walk. Questions or comments from the board members? Scott?
Questions or comments?
Yeah, on the, on the application.
So on the application, I'm, I'm still not satisfied that the applicant is the primary resident of this, at this location. You need to be a primary resident to have a daycare business, home daycare business. I need proof that the applicant lives there, is their primary residence, and also, like I stated in my site walk review, the parking right now, as it's laid out, it, I was just trying to pull it up on my phone again, but the parking pretty much shines at the neighbor's house, definitely in the backyard. This time of year, it's not an issue, but come winter time, when the sun sets at four, four-ten, and they come and pick their kids up at five, seems to me would be kind of annoyance to have that. So I, I guess, I would ask the applicant, the applicant should look at changing the parking. Instead of parking facing to the left as you drive in, face to the right away from, so the lights are shining on your own property. I know when we first had this application, you were looking at, starting out with twelve kids, but you were possibly thinking of going to twenty-four. As you know, you can't have twenty-four here. May I ask you to stand up to the podium so you can?
If you could go up here, please? Yes?
So if, if the applicant, if, if the application was to move forward, you only allowed twelve in this air, in this zone. So your parking, I believe it's two spaces per student, which would be only six parking spots required. So you wouldn't necessarily need twelve.
Twelve kids?
Okay.
You mean twelve kids instead of twenty-four?
If you're gonna have twelve students, you need to have six parking places.
Okay.
Okay? You don't need more than that.
Okay.
Okay? So in your plan, you're showing four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Twelve. Showing twelve. So you may be able to do something with your parking that's not shining lights on your neighbors with the smaller parking number of lots required.
What's a width for a car?
Parking stall needs to be.
Usually they're like nine by twenty, or nine by.
Depth is nine?
Width is nine.
Width is nine, so you could park four cars head in to the back of the property, right? This way, coming off the driveway, and then another two up here. You follow me?
You could, yep. But you won't have enough room to open doors.
Okay, yep, 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 okay, yep. Well, if you want, if you carried further down.
Right.
Okay.
I know we haven't heard from the neighbors. We haven't sent out a public notice yet, but that's one, those are two hurdles that you need to overcome for me, I guess, is proof of residency and parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
You all set, Scott? Roger? Anything to add to that?
Um, no, I, I think that, that question was asked about residency during the site walk. I think Jerry had mentioned something like that. And so if it was gonna be your parents that were living there, then, then, and they were the primary resident, then they should probably be the ones applying for the.
She is the mother. Okay.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I am the mother. Um, I own.
Well, you look just like your daughter.
Yeah, I own the business with my daughter.
Okay.
And I live there. That's my primary residency. That's, I live there. And my daughter is moving, uh, the end of July to Baxton, too. So I'm on the business to.
Okay. For the conditional use application, can you just add your name?
Okay.
Along with her.
All right.
Do you follow me?
Uh-huh.
That's all we need, is your name and her name, because you own the property.
Yes.
If it's a in-home occupation, it can only be carried out by the homeowner. Meaning, you, she can run it, but you are in charge, because it's your house. You're in charge of what goes on there. You don't necessarily have to be involved with the daycare, but you're responsible for the property itself.
And that would be, I think that would mean that your name on the applications and the, like, the regulations, the licensure and stuff like that would be the thing. So it just, they both align. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Okay.
So if I, I put my name on, on the application.
Yep.
Does she still need to prove their residency?
No.
Okay.
Does she?
That's up to you guys.
I think.
If, if, if you're the one running the daycare, then your name should be on it. She, if she's the one running the daycare, then she needs to have the residency as she's the one running it and the resident of the, the home, I believe. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So what we'd be needed is just what be the parking issue, the issues will be the parking only?
The, the issue is, we'd like to see the parking as you come in on the right-hand side of the driveway in between the new building and your existing garage, instead of on the left. Do you follow me?
Yeah, yeah.
And you talk to the contractor who's gonna be doing the work?
I think I'll talk to the contractor about that.
Okay. And then you'll have to submit a revised plan with showing the parking that's changed.
And, and the, the goal being that, just that we're not interrupting the neighbors at all with, with headlights is the goal. Does that make sense, too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That makes sense. Thank you so much.
No, yeah, I was, I just, that's why I'm asking. I just wanted to make sure.
Anything else, Roger?
No.
Sorry to keep interrupting.
No, that, no, that's fine. You were all set, correct? Okay. Greg?
I'm good. You guys got it all.
Okay.
Okay, so I had it. I couldn't quite hear, so she said, uh, so she's gonna, we're gonna get a new application with the homeowner on it and the daughter is moving in, end of July. Is that what I heard?
Yes. And, um, we have an email here from Nate Schools, chief of, uh, fire chief, dated January eighth, and he's listed his conditions that are required before any occupancy at the daycare on two eighty-eight Peace Road is allowed. I can read those, but they're pretty straightforward. Okay? Have you, have you seen this, uh, letter from the fire chief?
No, no.
Okay. Well, you, I'm sure she's gotten it.
I, it was on vacation that week, so why do you not know?
Give me double check to see if she received it. I'm guessing, but I think Roxanne, Roxanne mentioned to me that she did send it to her, but I might be wrong. But we'll double check on that.
I can, I can give you my copy of.
Yes. Okay.
So anything I don't really quite under, so the, under this one, the building must have road access as required. My assumption would be that would be past the parking up, up to the building.
I would assume that would be that the road has to be built sufficiently to allow apparatus to get to the building.
Yeah.
Instead of going across the grass or something like that. But we can check with him if he would like. I don't know what the NFPA one requirement is for road access, but I assume it's probably a twenty-foot right away. Okay. Do we want to wait on a public hearing, or do we want to set a public hearing for the next meeting?
I'd like to see some updated plans.
Okay.
We should probably have dimensions on this parking area. Right, because we just.
Well, she's got forty feet on there.
That's the property line.
Right.
And that's twelve feet from the trees to the property line.
Yes, yes.
Center of those trees.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so this park, the, the back, I think, was gonna go into those trees, wasn't it?
Yes.
And when I was there that night, she said she wasn't going to do any more planting.
Right. Well, if the parking's on the right, does she need to put screening up on the left?
No.
Okay. Is the board, the board agreement with that?
Yes.
Yeah, that, or, I mean, a fence or something, as long as, as long as the neighbors are satisfied, I, I won't, you're not gonna hear me complain. So if, if they're a fence or they're, you know, and if it sounds like the board like, would like it to go the other direction so the car's pulling and pulled to the right instead of pulled to the left toward your neighbor's house. So, um, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? So we'll wait for some public hearing until we get a revised parking plan.
When do you think you would have those available to us?
I have a wedding on, uh, July, August second, I think, in, in August, in the middle of August.
Yeah.
I'll be for that.
Okay.
So I think the reason for that question was, are we have a meeting scheduled for July twenty-eighth, but if, if it's not gonna be within that timeframe.
He's so busy that day.
Yeah. So.
Maybe in August or do you think it's maybe in August?
Yep. Yeah, we just connect with Patty and get that information to her then, and then you'll get on the docket for the next, um, meeting.
Sounds good.
Any other questions, uh, any questions from town staff? Okay. Okay, you're released.
Thank you so much.
You're so nice.
Yeah, and have a fantastic wedding.
If you have any questions, please feel to contact Patty or Roxanne at the code enforcement office.
Yeah.
And they can help you.
All right.
Okay? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the CEO report.
No report.
No report. You were away. Approval of minutes for June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
I thought they looked good. I didn't see any errors. So I guess I make a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five as written.
A second. A motion by Greg, a second by Roger, to approve the minutes for June twenty-third. Discussion?
Question?
Sure.
When we were talking about the Quonset hut.
Yes.
It's called a, because a metal Quonset hut is not prohibited, or is prohibited?
Good eye. That was Roger.
Says Scott.
I didn't mention anything about Quonset huts. I just stated that the buildings need to meet the design standards.
I said that.
You said that, Jerry?
I said that Quonset hut are, are not permitted.
Not permitted?
Not permitted.
Okay.
You know, let's see.
I'm pretty sure I said that.
You didn't say not prohibited.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you want to amend that? Does, uh, do you want to change your motion to, um.
Yes.
The amendment? I have to do that.
So I'm just trying to find it.
It's on the back of page, page two, second paragraph down.
Okay, so.
I would just strike out where, I would just strike out because the metal Quonset hut is not prohibited.
Let's do that.
I would just strike that out.
Yeah, let's just do that completely.
We don't want to say it's not permitted?
We should say it's not permitted.
Essentially what he was told.
We told him it's not.
If someone said that, then yes, the name should be there. I didn't say it.
Jerry, would you change it to Jerry said?
Yes.
Prohibited to permit.
Jerry said that the design standards for commercial buildings. Can I amend the minutes right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Jerry said the design standards for the commercial building do not allow a Quonset hut type building. How's that sound? Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, somebody want to, you want to amend your motion to approve with the additions?
Yep. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-third.
As amended.
As amended, on page two, paragraph two.
Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
Motion, uh, Greg, sacrifice Scott to amend the minutes for July fifteen, excuse me. June, June twenty-third.
June twenty.
Discussion. All those in favor? Four with one absent.
No four with this, what four? We don't have it. Oh, do we have a new appointee yet?
Not yet. Approval bills, Mr. Treasurer.
I have an invoice in my little red folder for one thousand dollars. This is for printing the work on the tax map for Buxton for two thousand twenty-five. My understanding is this is something we've done in the past. It's a portion of the, to have the tax maps done.
Does that come out of our budget?
That's.
So this is only a portion of it, and I think now that I'm thinking more about it, the year that we raised money for the shoreline maps and didn't spend it.
Mm-hmm.
We agreed to put towards.
Okay.
The tax maps.
Yep.
And this, last year, we didn't raise money for a shoreline map, but we did raise money to put in for the tax maps.
Okay.
And that's what this is for last year's budget.
Okay, but this comes out of our budget?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve? Do I have one?
Make a motion to approve the bill from two-two-two, Sebago Technics, in the amount of one thousand dollars for mapping.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Roger, to approve one thousand dollars for the two thousand twenty-five Buxton tax, tax map. All those in favor? Before one absent. Now, this is to update the mats when their new, new properties subdivided or built or added to the tax maps. Communications, I have a notice from the Town of Gorm for the scheduled site walk for Sketch Plan Review for Magnificent Homes LLC at thirteen, thirteen lot subdivision on Deering Drive. The site walk is scheduled for July seventeenth at five P M. So if people are interested about this thirteen lot subdivision that's going off Deering Road that you go through Scarborough and you go into Buxton and then you go into Gorm, um, the site walk by the Gorm Planning Board is five P M. on July seventeenth. Um, I think if you pull in, it's about, what, a mile in on the right-hand side? And you should, if you need any further clarification, you can contact the Town of Gorm. And we also have, do we have another reminder from them? Or not? I saw something. Yes. If, if people are interested, we have a map here. And street parking and meeting location, but we're near the clearing on Deering Drive. Rain date is set for Tuesday, July twenty-second at five P M. Visit the Town of Gorm website for scheduled updates. The board and interested parties should plan to meet as follows. Okay? Any questions on that? We have a notice here from M.DOT on, notice of formal on-demand public meeting for Hollis, Buxton, to ask the addition of a traffic signal at the intersection of Route twenty-two, two-oh-two, excuse me, near against the trail, Route one-seventeen, Choi Valley Road, and Salmon Falls Road to the bridge replacement of Salmon Falls Bridge, three-seven-oh-eight over the Saco River. It goes from July seventeen, excuse me, July seventh to July eighteenth. And if anybody's interested, there is a handout from M.DOT here with a Q R code, and I guess this allows for what, public comments, uh, digitally?
Yeah.
Is there gonna be a meeting, a physical meeting? Do you know?
I don't think so. I don't think they're doing that.
They don't do physical meetings?
It's hard telling what they do nowadays. Um, I know they've been going to a lot of these on-demand things to stay down of staff time and.
So they want to put a light at the bridge on the Buxton side.
Yeah.
At the intersection of Salmon Falls Road and one-seventeen. I personally think it's ludicrous, but maybe I'll comment that when I see it.
Yeah, if you're gonna put a light, I mean, I'd put crosswalks and sidewalks, too.
Yeah.
Well, they're not gonna do sidewalks, because there's no sidewalks on two-oh-two.
Right.
Yeah, I know, it's.
They're, they're gonna make the bridge wider, though.
Yeah, they're gonna have five foot.
It's gonna be four-foot shoulders, but unfortunately decided against sidewalks.
So the site, if, if you come down off of one-seventeen, the hill, the site distance now isn't that great with, with those short rails. It's a high crash location.
Well, one-seventeen.
When you're on one-seventeen, you pull out onto two-oh-two or go straight across, and you look left is, and you have the bridge rail right there. Low cars can get lost, cars can kind of get lost in your.
And that's why they're concerned.
Yeah, and so even though the bridge is gonna be wider.
Right.
This new railing is gonna be even taller.
Okay.
So I suspect that's probably why they elevated this up to a traffic light, because it's their way of dealing with a high crash.
It'd slow down that, that area, that traffic, I mean.
Well, I mean, it's thirty-five miles an hour coming down the hill from Hollis.
How many?
I don't think I've, I said, I don't think I've ever driven thirty-five miles an hour coming down that hill.
Oh, no. Oh, no, people go fifty if they're taking their time.
Yeah. Past Big Daddy's there.
I've seen a lot of state troopers parking right at the bottom of that hill.
They, they would be busy immediately.
Yeah.
If you're coming from Buxton going towards Hollis, that curve.
Well, in.
Is not, on two-oh-two is not that bad. And I could, Salmon Falls Road is pretty.
It's pretty bad. You, you can't really see left at all.
On Salmon Falls Road.
Yeah, from Salmon Falls.
That's the concern, is the bridge is so close to the intersection that.
And the railing.
And the railings. Okay. So if people are interested in commenting on that, um, and you want further information, feel free to stop in and talk to Patty or Roxanne. They can provide you a copy of what we've received.
I think maybe a pro out of this, if the light did go in, is when it is, someone is pulling out of one-seventeen on Salmon Falls Road, two-oh-two will stop.
Mm-hmm.
And the traffic that's heading north out of Hollis will definitely be slowed down for those lights and that.
Yep.
You know.
I wonder how many times.
Address some of the speeding and the trucks things.
Yep. Now, talking about something completely, well, talking about the bridge replacement, what, what, they're proposing to close that bridge completely.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the trucks coming up one-twelve, how are they gonna get to the bobbling plant?
Four-A.
Four-A.
Right now, the plan, the last I knew, when I talked to the project manager a few months ago, it'll be this fall for advertisement.
Okay.
Um, next year, they're going to do some work on, is it four, four-A for that, after you cross the new bridge that was built.
Yep.
Going up the hill.
That curve.
Right, that curve.
Right by the country club road.
Yep, they're gonna widen that.
Okay.
Clear some trees.
Okay.
Do some slopes, widen that, so it's safer for trucks anyway to pass one. pass one another. So while all this is happening, the new steel for the bridge has to be fabricated.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna take a year, anyway, after the project is let to get the steel.
They're proposing all?
So it'll be a 2027 closure.
Right. They're proposing all-new piers and steel?
No piers.
No piers?
No piers.
So they're gonna eliminate the piers?
Just new abutments with, um, I think there are seven-foot or eight-foot tall girders running across.
Okay.
And they're?
That big?
Yeah.
So that way they can climb up eight feet before they jump off the bridge?
Yep, uh, then they plan to, um, remove the, the piers, the existing piers.
So, um, and the reason to close the bridge is they can do it so much quicker without having alternate traffic?
It, it can. We, we would do this on the trail bike all the time. You could save a construction season by doing that.
Yep.
It's also safer for the workers, um, all around. It just, people usually complain that, that, at the end of the day, it's like, why didn't you close it and just be done with it?
Yeah, okay. And I think they were saying that they wanted to get as many of the trucks on 35 coming from the south into, in, coming up from south.
Yeah. I know the DOT's thing is always, the road's open to anybody. They can, they'll sign it, but they, that's?
And I might be, can be wrong, but I've heard that the, the dispatchers at Poland Spring are pretty adamant about telling those guys where to go.
Yeah.
So?
At the end of the day, they go where they wanna go.
Exactly.
And just follow the GPS.
Yeah, that's why they follow 117 and take that left-hand turn over the bridge all the time.
But it does say truck route with the big flashing arrows, right?
Yeah, to not take that left.
Right.
But they take it, because that's what the GPS says.
Yep. And it is a state road, so, you know?
What are you gonna do?
Yeah. I mean, they could put a, a weight limit up on 117, right? Okay. Uh, in addition to that, I have a State of Maine Department of Agricultural Conservation and Forestry, a public notice to inform the town of standards to submit their municipal components plan to Maine Department of Agricultural Conservation and Forestry for review. Other business. Does anybody have any additional other business?
Yeah, I had one, but I've, I've lost it now.
Um, 10 days?
Oh, we're gonna do our next meeting?
Um, I think since we're not having a public hearing scheduled, depending on what gives in for applications, which we'll know right today, correct?
We have a six-unit condo application.
Okay.
We also have 207 landscaping application.
And those, those are ready for us to review?
I haven't looked at them yet, but they came in at Friday, I think, as well. So they may do that one, too.
Okay. So I assume we will have a meeting on the 28th, unless somebody deems that these applications aren't complete, we need further information.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Oh, I guess maybe this was it, so do we know the status of, we have a sluffing in the audience tonight?
I know.
Do we have a status? Of, uh?
Of what?
Of filling the empty chair.
Have you guys talked about it at all?
We're gonna discuss it more Monday.
Okay. I think you had somebody come forward, correct?
Correct.
And I think he had some experience, correct?
Correct.
Boss, this is what, seven-day public notice or five-day public notice, and then you pick something?
I don't think the writing candidate qualified. Okay.
Uh, so we'll, uh, officers will wait?
Excuse me?
Officers will wait till we have a full board?
Yeah, why don't we do that? Um?
Makes sense.
Anybody from the public like to address the board this evening? No? Okay.
Chair orientation?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:30.
Yeah.
Second, sorry. Motion by Scott, second by Craig to adjourn at 7:30 PM. Discussion. All those in favor? Good evening.